Oh, it's going nice. I'm not reading.
I'll read it.
Yes, you will.
All right, Daryl, I'm gonna read this part. Not, not right now.
I'll fire it.
The, the limerick. I put it right here so that it's up here for you. Because then you can read this one and not the nice one. In the brain. It gets handed to you.
Isn't that black and white or what?
It's in your packet, but I printed one separate for you. So you can take it over there.
You guys already have it coming?
Okay, Joe.
And now do you have it?
Yes, first time ever. If I could mention anything, either anything about?
Yes.
Go see it, yeah, right.
They already ordered flowers from Kittleberger and they were delivered today. Hi, Carl. Oh, I have it.
Welcome to the Bill and the Butcher Workshop, December eighth, ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have two items here scheduled on the agenda. The first is employee appraisals. I believe that is part of your packets. This evening you have an example of the employee performance review and assessment. And this, I believe, is what we're taking a look at. We have visited this before. We looked at some examples. And we believe that this has been put together, correct?
Right. So is this, this is gonna be attached to the calendar year, so we start in January? Is that correct?
I don't know. We're going to do that the early in physical years up.
And my employment, we do do it by the fiscal year, the same as our budgets. So we choose to do that or we can get the calendar. Up to you guys.
I have a calendar, so we don't have to wait too much longer because that would be always a problem.
That's true. You've been making us wait for three years. What's?
What's that all about? We've done that, just.
Oh, terrible. You just kicked it.
I'm sorry, it's wrapped around my foot.
That's been a good call.
I don't, I don't have a particular problem doing that on a, by calendar year.
Yeah, on calendar system. And I think she's right. I don't think we want, we should start to.
Yeah, calendar year.
So this, will you be doing this or will you be asking us to? Just like before Heather?
With employee performance review. I would assume that I would be doing this either in conjunction with the board or the legs on to the office.
Oh.
That was weird.
All right, just a question.
All right, so we should set a timeline that should be done beginning in January, right? Beginning of the calendar or physical year, physical year, no, calendar year. In this calendar year. And that it should be completed then because this will be, this will be done actually by Heather as well, I believe. Correct? In terms of employees in the office. Is that correct?
Yes. So I would do it and then if you wanted to sit in, that'd be great. And then Jake was gonna be using it for, like, because you do yearly, which is gonna be for your quarterly, right?
Yeah, I can't use it. The yearly one is in the denture.
Yeah.
It's gonna be just an interim kind of thing.
And then this will be also for you to do, Jake and Erin.
And then I was gonna say, who is?
I'll do Marcia's.
You do.
I already did hers.
I'll do Julie's.
She was my daughter.
We have, what I was wondering is if the employees ask if there was something that we could do to help them meet some of their objectives. Should we have that sort of in here somewhere? Are we helping them to meet? Is there something more that we could do?
Yeah, so if you have a section, an employee section, so what happens is so this is for the upcoming year. The first time they see this shouldn't be the end of the year. So that you probably shouldn't meet at least quarterly. So you can discuss the objectives and make sure you're on target, have the ability to change direction. Like we talked about before, because it's all about making sure everyone succeeds.
Well, right. If we're lacking in our support somewhere, love, then we really, a lot of employees don't, that you know that.
So on a, on a, on a section, yeah, you're in a section when they meet quarterly, they should be able to respond to it.
Yeah.
Even to the fact that I know that the board has asked me to get this done by March. But because of this, this, and this, I can't. Yeah, it gives you a way to respond to it. And all the objectives, what's good about it is you should make your objectives all due at the end of the year.
Exactly.
You make, you know, you make one done by February, March, depending on what, what they are, so.
Well, we, yeah, we designed this off your recommendation that they're all, they're not yearly. These are to be revisited every quarter and then see if that's even needed anymore, if it's completed. And then if something new needs to be added, it's, and each of these is designed. You'll see there's a one for the supervisor and then there's one for the employee. So they fill it out, we fill it out, and then we discuss.
Oh, yeah.
I see, yes, I saw that.
Nice.
And Marcia and I actually went through it together. And it was kind of a lengthy process that we did it together. And we thought it was really, really helpful.
And a good one, that we always have, the two good ones is to identify, say, Marcia needs to identify two cost-saving measures in a year or so, that she may have found, you know, whatever. When you say the bill of demand, or you decided to change in processes that you have, that do a lot of things. So it's about just creating those type of things.
Well, that's kind of what, yeah.
And she really came up with her own, because that's what you, I mean, the fact.
Yeah, so it's a combination of both. Because there's stuff that you, the supervisor would want them to meet and then there's, there's whatever. And there are, besides the object, to me, objectives, objectives are something that's obtainable. So you, you should be able to have some data to prove you achieved. Then we always have at the end, which you could add, Heather, with this verbiage, is a goal. So an employee's goal is their goal. It's their personal goal. And they could say, you know, next year, my goal is to be the clerk. Whatever it is, those, those goals are stuff that you, you put down and don't really have a lot of data and support. An objective, you need, you can, on this paper, say they met the objective without some hard proof they met it. So you're gonna have something that shows.
Yeah, that's good.
That makes sense? Marcia, you're.
Oh, oh. I just, Heather told me that the last time this form came up that you, the board, weren't crazy about these quality of work, about knowledge of the specific categories. But I, when I was doing my own self-assessment, I found them very useful. It helped me to categorize and really consider the different aspects of the work. And, you know, filter out, okay, in which ways do I excel? There were no other, no, no need for improvement there, but, you know, for other people maybe.
Did you have any area of improvement or?
It's not that I didn't like them. I think there's some, if we go and look up these words somewhere else and you find some other definitions on that, like attitude, you're not gonna see usually the attitude on a form. Like, that, that word isn't probably fitting. But there's, you know, I could spend some time playing around with some of these words. But I think there's just better, better words for a couple of these. That's all.
Because I like the quality of the work and the job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
Well, I think attitude's the right word for that, you know? I mean, the attitude of the, of the.
Right. It's kind of subjective, if you think, you know, so attitude, I don't, I don't know. But yeah, I think we're fine.
You've got, you've got a page, Heather, with a page that is pretty blank. Which is coming after employee performance review. Employee self-assessment, however, stands alone. I think that this big page should be put there. Because if this is a checklist and very brief, I think that there's a lot of room for expansion on each of these and therefore a page like this where there may be an expectation that, you know, there's a little bit more that's going to be written here by a.
I can speak to that, Daryl. This was designed to be filled out in Word. So the fact that there's just that one little piece on a single page, that's gonna get bumped down as you fill out the document.
Yeah, that, yeah, this is a, I know, but it should. Professionalism instead of attitude. Professionalism.
That's a good one.
Okay.
I like that one. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Awesome.
And Daryl, sorry, I missed what you said. Did you say you wanted the board to go through this with each employee?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that I look at this.
No, in the beginning, in the beginning, when you said, who would be doing this? I just, I couldn't hear that. I apologize.
So this will be designed to be filled in, in Word, on the computer?
Yeah. Yours ended up being like way longer. It was just.
It was a couple pages at least.
Oh, yeah, go get one.
Yeah.
That's a little change.
She went to town.
Yeah.
I like the self-assessment. That's really good.
Yeah, that piece is important because it'll knock straight another conversation. If the employee and the supervisor are so different, why?
Yeah, that's, that's.
You know, it engages a conversation.
Yeah, exactly. Nice.
So this is, this would be document that would be filled out in, say, in January. We're talking about the beginning of the year, right? So this would go to, and this is not for the ranking part. And they have, this would be for office, correct? For this office primary.
Jake said he would use the, the form for his own notes and stuff. But it's not, yeah, he's got a different process that's.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you. I got all good.
There was two, I didn't vote.
He does.
It's not ready to sidebar. So we would, this would be passed out, two twenty?
That would actually be sent electronically to a computer. They, they would fill it out. And you, when, you know, if Heather sends them out, she could say, please send back. And you don't give up a two-week timeframe or something long or whatever. Send me one objective and one goal and then Heather can, when she receives it, Heather can put an objective. It's a combination of each of them contributing. And they'll all done, all the time, saved up the time. At the end, they're, they'll sign it. Heather will sign it. Marcia will sign it. And you probably could sign it. You usually have the highest level sign up on it. And we got a neat little process.
Well, when this, when you start to do this, is there documentation from last year that you would carry over?
I have some, but we're kind of like starting fresh with, with this. But I, we did it a year before, so we were, during COVID, because we weren't here. But.
But it'll be nice if you just open up a folder on, on a computer and you'll see year after year after year, and a lot of data.
Exactly, yeah.
To support.
It works very well.
It does.
So you're saying a follow-up would be quarterly?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you need quarterly on it to make sure what you, your objectives you put in place are actually happening throughout that year.
Checking.
Yeah, it's like a check.
Yeah. I need to go again.
You liked it and we also liked that these kind of guided us to kind of open the discussion to the little areas. So we thought it was enough.
Yeah.
We'll see when we start using it.
Yeah, and then for your sake, Heather, as the supervisor, if you're rating someone lower in some of these areas, the next step would be, the conversation is why, how are you gonna get somebody?
Exactly.
You know, to succeed in it. So you're saying if someone doesn't have the job knowledge or rate them low, now it's your responsibility to help them.
Well, that's kind of what I was saying.
Is tell them.
We think we gotta help them.
Right. It can't be, there's gotta be reasons behind it, you know? I'd like to see you do this, 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 next year.
And how can I support you to meet those?
Yeah.
So these are somewhat objective areas at need or areas where I would excel. And then there would be specificity underneath, if you're saying quality. You have failing, you have needs to improve. If they can go for salary, improve in the same areas.
It's just if, if I'm sitting here as an employee and you say, I don't, my job knowledge is not so well or, or the quality of work, I want to, some examples of what you're talking about. You can't just, you can't just have some support. That's why if you need quarterly, it should have it, I guess you're talking about it through the year.
It's not new.
Right, it's not new to anybody.
So I think you just highlighted one of the concerns that I was trying to articulate in my own mind before I said it is the, this is very binary, you know, it's job knowledge. Either you're selling it or, and just in your words, it's not so good. Be somewhere in there, in the middle of that too. And it's not, you can be pretty good, but you still can need improvement.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, I mean, it says, you know, areas need improvement. But I think people are gonna hear that as, hey, I'm bad at that. Not, you know, so I guess that's part of the.
So under, honestly, one I gave Heather, the one I gave you has needs improvement, met, exceeds, and then I think excels or excellence, the fourth one. So even if you had something that'll kind of show where they're at and then that.
Well, we had that and you guys didn't like it. That was why we used these areas and then it literally checked off. And you guys were like, I, I don't wanna focus on negatives. It should be focusing most on positives. And so we took it out.
Yeah, no, that's the one I handed you, so I definitely didn't say that.
No, our original one that we were using before. Well, we weren't using it, but.
Right. You want, you wanted to be positive because you want Heather to succeed. But you don't want it to be positive that they're really not doing something that you need them to do. So, so it's a truthful document. It just, they're not surprised by it, you know what I mean? Because you're meeting, you're meeting, you're meeting and talking about it. So by the end of the year, you shouldn't see a lot of bad things on here because as you guys are working through it, it's a partnership. This isn't a boss just having all the control. It's a partnership, you know, the entire process.
She liked it. I mean, why don't you speak, because you're the one.
Oh, because she got excellent everywhere this. If it was the other way around, we maybe.
She should just be the boss, I mean.
Different conversation.
Well, if you change it to, you know, instead of areas where play excels in or a need of improvement, we could just change it like a swat, change it to strengths and opportunities.
Yeah, it just, it just.
It's all, you know, you don't prefer that always, like.
No. But you don't, it's, I don't think that's, I don't think that's one, but.
You're great.
And I don't.
So what's, what's the, it's tough, it's all tough, you.
It's kind of different for us too, because we talk about things every day. So not, this is not important, I don't mean that, but like, anytime something comes up, we discuss it right away. So.
Yeah, so maybe, so maybe you get rid of all this mamo jumbo and you have objectives, then objectives only. And they're being rated on the objective. And get rid of all this other mamo jumbo in between, you know what I mean? And you're really just reading up on the objectives that they had for the year. So you're not gonna, and then there's a common sex, section on competencies or professional boundaries and competencies. You just have that. And you can say, oh, I would like to see Marcia at times when she's communicating with blah, 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 that she, you know, she talks to him in a more, you know, professional way. And that would be competencies and professionalism. You could just have a section for that. You could talk about that.
You would call it competencies and what?
And professionalism or something. Then get rid of all this other stuff. Because it is, be very difficult to, to choose some of these and then, and then not really have anything to. And then like I said, if someone comes back and they rate themselves high in all this and you're low in all this, how are you gonna? Jake, you were saying.
No, I just wondered if you said, here's where employee excels in and leave those. And then just remove the section of, it's obviously you don't excel on it, you need improvement. Or you could use improvement and that doesn't highlight, it's not saying, it's like, hey, if I don't have job knowledge checked, that means, because, hey, you don't have a, your, your job knowledge isn't an area that you excel. So here's one of your objectives, how to improve your job knowledge or an aspect of your job knowledge. And you remove that negative connotation from the bottom area where, you know, obviously it's kind of, you know, hey, need improvement. Because you don't excel in it.
And your objectives are gonna be designed by the fish that you proved in.
If it's an art filled in, I don't know, I'm just thinking about low.
No, no, but you should.
I see what you're saying. And I, I guess we just, we do need somewhere where you're documenting things that, because then it doesn't just, just get forgotten or thrown out the window if there is something they need to. Because, okay, then instead of maybe moving it from this altogether, and if there is an issue, then you just document it separately. But people feel like very threatened if something is put in their file that's, you know, and they don't like that. It feels like, well, when are you gonna, when does that come out? I don't want you to remove that. But I, it would be nice to have somewhere where we have some kind of record of things that.
We have to have, we have to.
So I don't know how to incorporate that, other than just making it part of the goals, but.
I'm not sure that there will be a necessity to need to remove something. If something is put in, deficiency, that doesn't get removed just because you're working on that and you then need.
Improve.
And improve.
I don't mean remove it from the file. People get very, they feel very.
I mean, that would be a progression. You're looking back at this time.
Yeah.
There was, here, you have made strides to improve. Here, you have made that improvement.
That's it.
So that's a document that's, you don't just leave the good, you leave a progression.
I agree. But if you have conversations, I think, we'll be fine. And if you really wanted to, you take job knowledge, which are first one on the sheet, say job knowledge and you put underneath it, needs improvement, meets expectations or exceeds, and label one of these.
Well, yeah, it's not, yeah.
So and then you have that conversation. The reason why I gave you needs improvement is just because of these two times you were in this and you did this and you did that. At least you're not saying they stink and they're terrible. You're just saying we need some improvement. And, or you met the expectations. You, you, you meet them. And then exceeds would be like Marcia.
That's a record.
There is a certain amount of time where you kind of remove something from the file.
How long is that?
I don't know. I have to get back to you. There's a records and retention thing.
And only lasts as long as the board, I guess?
Yeah.
Starts over fresh.
Starts over fresh. All right.
I wouldn't want to move the entire areas need of improvement or whatever we're calling it, section to objectives. Because some of those areas that might need improvement, it's really hard to quantify an improvement in a way that fits the, what we want in an objective. Now, if it's like be nicer to people, oh, okay. Do you have X number of conversations without swearing? I, I don't know.
Right, you gotta be a little thorough with your.
Yeah, more specific.
So I think, I think we're almost there.
I'm gonna tweak these.
Yeah, I'm just like, and it doesn't have to be the way, I'm just saying if job not analogy, quality work, what are you doing with that? Like, are you gonna tell someone, you're gonna circle it that they excel on it or they need improvement in, I guess.
No, I wouldn't put those bullets there.
Yeah, if you even have an explanation after it, I guess it's not terrible.
I was using these categories as, you know, jumping off points for just commentary, just to discuss. And then it's, I found it, when we did it, I found it easier to come up with objectives after we had discussed the writing.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
But I like, you either excel in something or you need improvement. You also can meet expectations. I think there's something missing.
Well, can we just call that something else though? Areas in need of improvement?
Well, what if, what if, what if we just, we maintain the categories, quality of work, job knowledge, et cetera? And instead of separating them, excels in or needs improvement, we can just say, you know, please comment on your, how you feel, how you feel your employee is doing in each of these categories.
Yeah.
Have to be.
Well, that's kind of what.
Yeah, put it there and have the three things underneath it and you're done. You either need improvement in that area, you met it, or you exceeded it. Does that understand me?
Yes. I've historically gotten more benefit out of a narrative than a check the box, though.
Yes.
You know, I.
It has to be talked about.
And I think that if you did a narrative for every one of these versus at the very end, when you do a summary, that's where you put it in here. You're gonna use, this person's gonna use this tool. She, Marcia excels in her job knowledge. Her communication, I'd like to see her improve on. So you summarize all that at the very end. And then you have all this, if you wanna put some meat on every one of these things, that's fine with me. It's just a little, it's a little more work.
It wasn't, but it was helpful.
And it's not like we've got seventy-two people that were.
They got it.
Well, then, exactly. But I think this is a good thing.
All right, we'll go back to the drawing board.
No, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think you really need to.
I don't think you have to that much.
Thank you.
So we're gonna see it, that's why I changed to this.
Well, we can take out attitude and we might.
Yeah.
I like the competencies and professionalism section. I like that. Yeah, we'll see.
Make a few changes, send it back and then tell us to minor own business, so you don't.
Do you want us to email it to you or do you want another meeting?
No, we don't need another meeting.
Okay.
We beat this one to death.
Okay.
In honor of this is.
Hey, Joe.
We're giving you guidance, but this, this is ultimately coming down to. Given you're guiding, this, this is ultimately coming down to Heather, if you're in terms of doing this, if you sit with those that you're working with, I don't know, I don't know, you do with the guys, you do a very different one, part of the contract.
Yeah.
Right. Right, yeah, this is, it's a very similar, I guess, end result, it's just a different path there, but the same, ultimately, the conversations, in work, part of, part of, Marsha was saying, that's the, that's, I think, the beneficial part of it, so whatever tool you use is part of that conversation, it's, it's helpful.
Twenty hours.
We need a tweet, or either.
Yes. Thank you.
The next item that we had was scheduled, smoking in public parks. I don't have an idea, but I think maybe something that we should discuss, I don't know if we have anything in the policy.
That's me needing, like, ask me to put it out there, so.
Yeah, we have a policy, and, and we.
We have, chapter ninety of our code is parks and recreation areas, and the only thing it discusses is Article One, is the hours of operation, or hours that you're gonna use the park. I might be happy to try to, you know, draft up an Article Two for smoking in the parks, or something else, and set it down, and see if it, if it's good, and then, and my assumption would be, you know, to say, don't do it.
Exactly.
You know, so if there's no smarking, no smoking, no smoking in the public parks, or smarking, then, you know, they would, they'd have to go in the next meeting and tell them to do a legal and have a public hearing for code change. And if that's, that's what I agree to have tomorrow, and set it out there.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Just, I would agree with that, because we, we have it here, buildings that are called public buildings, or, or tall. Thirdly, we have a village. It's operated, and therefore, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have a, the policy, I would say no smoking in parks. I mean, if you have a big activity going on down at Dutch Park, Cathedral Park, it's kind of totally poor for many people, if there's, you know, smoking going on right around them, as opposed to where they normally do go, and that's up into the parking, which is, I don't know if that's public area, but it's certainly not in the park, so it's not part of the park per se.
Yeah.
Plus, plus the literature, if you're smoking in the parks, what are they gonna do? They just toss the bikes aside, and then you have, and I saw it per se, it's a lot.
Yeah, put it together there, Jaster.
They're ready.
Let's go.
Can we work on that? Would Don, Beverly craft something, take a look at, other places that have, already passed, something like this? Have you looked at all?
No, I haven't looked at all, I mean, I know a lot of areas, like, if you go to Frontier Field, you can't anywhere in Frontier, you know, it's just public or government or something. I think it's pretty, pretty consistent in a lot of outdoor areas. I think if we just, you know, and no smoking in public property, I think it's a little airy because of the railways, the railroad ways, and things like that, parking lots, but if you, you know, you can start with the parks, it's a really easy to define area.
Yeah.
So I would, I would agree with you.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna police the sidewalks, if somebody's walking on the sidewalk or anything like that, which is still public.
Really not policing the parks, either, up there.
No, it's just that, uh.
You're not gonna.
You'd ask, you'd ask them to be considered.
Suggested that you don't smoke. Right, no, it's not, he suggested it's gonna be a law now, but.
But it's not like.
But it's not like, uh, police.
But I think one of the things with what's I've agenda for the regular meeting as well, you know, I don't think you can, regardless of the use of cannabis outside of, sometimes I don't think you can limit it to areas where you don't have smoking, or where you don't also limit smoking, so if you allow smoking cigarettes there, you, you know, one of the parks could, you know, there's, you know, so it might be a good time to.
Agreed.
Address that.
Uh, if there's nothing else, then I think I would ask for a motion to close our.
Second.
Well, there it is. We might need to, uh.